I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Got public discussion? Okay. Seeing no public discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda in minutes.
So moved.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
We'll second.
Okay.
And just so it's noted, it's for the November fourteenth special end election. Okay.
Go. Um, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Next up is to review and approve the claims and conservation claims. Would entertain motion for that.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, is there a second? I'll second that. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Sir, signature page.
Does Roger just do the top sheet, Roger, on credit card claims, do you usually just do the top sheet or how?
Usually we pass them down.
Same sheet. She usually has a sheet on it?
Yeah.
Oh, let me know.
I don't sign them after. Yeah, we, hmm, we can deal with that later, but you got them approved. If you want to check on that, we can.
You'd have to say.
Yep. And stamp, right?
Mm-hmm.
Should look at it. This way. Are these, are these the same?
That's paid.
Okay.
This is paid, this is paid.
Oh, was this from last week?
Yeah.
Okay. Sign them on the back page?
Mm-hmm.
Here or far back?
No, we just sign it on the bottom of that page.
Bottom of this one?
Yeah.
And then date, same. Okay. Dan, do you want to go ahead on your monthly update?
Sure. Okay, the monthly metrics for my department, Veterans Affairs, last month, we had forty-six phone calls, uh, sixty-six messages, forty-five walk-ins, uh, did eighteen scheduled appointments, transported two veterans, and we had, uh, three hearing aids sets prepared. Current total number of system records I have is eleven eighty-nine. Uh, claims that are sitting in the VA system, uh, fifty-one. Claims that are under, uh, are ready for decision is one, and under development is eighteen. And then my VA healthcare re-enrollments is one. Uh, recently completed the re-accreditation exam that was developed by the National Association. Uh, still waiting on those exam results yet. Uh, completed the Hancock County Mentorship with Garner on November third and, uh, was assisting the VSO all day over there, went very well. Uh, working on the Department Policy and Procedure SOP to align with recent changes and other office tasks to keep that publication updated. I did not have any scheduled outreach activities during that timeframe. Uh, continuing to focus on enrollment VA healthcare for the calendar year. So far through October, I have twenty enrollments into VA healthcare that I didn't have previously, so that's a good thing. Um, was working with a surviving spouse recently here who lost her husband in twenty fifteen and was able to, uh, secure, uh, retroactive, uh, benefits for her, uh, to the amount of a hundred and twenty-six thousand. So she's going to have a nice Christmas, at least a little bit.
That's good.
Working on creating reports in VetPro using the ad hoc capability. I've created eighteen reports, still working to refine some of that data as I'm learning as I'm going. Uh, little time-consuming manually entering some of the awards and finances that did not migrate. That's an ongoing work in progress, so I keep doing that. Um, below you'll see the ad hoc reports developed, works in progress that, that I have put together. And so for the month of October, the snapshot, uh, monthly claims with the decision, those monthly awards amounted to seven thousand five hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-four cents in retroactive benefits, which would mean to get them caught up on their current monthly benefit is basically thirteen thousand four eighty-three sixty-six. And then claims with the decision year-to-date, uh, we're looking at forty-four thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and twelve cents with retroactive benefits of ninety-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. So like I talked about earlier, you'll see down there on your, uh, on your handout, the, uh, the various, uh, reports, these are the same kinds of numbers and reports that I'm giving to the commissioners. So they have a snapshot, but I know that you guys haven't seen that recently, so I kind of want to share that with you. Um, working with my district president, we got some District Five training planned for thirty November over at the Election Center. We'll bring in all twelve or thirteen, uh, county VSOs that are available for that sustained training. Uh, working to, uh, draft a yearly summary to you for the calendar year on all the stuff. So you'll, you'll get that next month, working on that. Uh, continuing to work on the budget for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five season. Um, my commissioners have some of the initial feedback that Tamia, uh, provided me. And of course, I walked them through some of that last, our last meeting. Um, I've got to talk to Derek, I understand we'll move away from this copier thing. And so I've got to touch base with Derek on getting a better, uh, printer that can do fax scan and copy and then what that's going to look like. And I think he's got something available that I can use, I, I'll have to talk with him a little more on that. Um, also working on amending two discharges for two veterans. One is an administrative correction to get him his Vietnam Service Awards. Uh, that has been submitted. The other one is just to simply correct the date of birth, which was typed wrong on the veteran's discharge. So we're trying to get that taken care of. And then like I said, I'll start, uh, putting together all that information on, for the calendar year of kind of what the department has done. And subject to your questions, that's really all I have for, for my report.
Sounds good. Any questions from the board? Thanks for. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. Bill, we're up to EMS training agreement. Um, is there anything you want to say on that, otherwise?
Uh, just real quickly, um, last week we talked about, you know, Roger Fisher at the sheriff's office had a, had a policy over there. Uh, when I left here, I did get a copy of that policy, I did read his policy. Um, there was a lot of inconsistencies on what happens there versus what happens in EMS. Um, basically there are people have to be hired and employed prior to signing agreements. So I was able to steal a couple pieces from that, but other than that, there was just too many, um, differences to, to make a, a whole lot of change. So basically with the form, um, was just kind of changing of the wording, uh, to get rid of the, the loan aspect of the policy. Um, I also did send this to Todd after I completed it that day after the Board Supervisor meeting, and he did get back to me before I, um, gave you guys a copy of this. He did make a couple formatting changes to what we had, but that was about it. So Todd has seen this as well.
Okay. Any questions from the board, otherwise I would entertain a motion on this topic?
Does that amount need to be filled in or is that changeable? Is it maximum amount or is just?
Tammy's question was for number two, about the middle of the first page, that blank dollar amount. Is that something the board wants to fill in or leave open depending on the courses or?
It's kind of dependent on the certification level of the course on that dollar amount.
Okay.
Um, my, my plan is, is to, you know, when we have some people that apply for this or ask for this, we'll fill in the amount and I can bring you those signed off, signed out papers for approval, if that's how you want to handle that.
That'd be fine.
Yeah.
With me.
The class we have coming up, it started right now. Uh, it sounds like we're going to have four people in that class that are going to, they're going to request funding for that class out of the nine. Um, that class is like eighteen hundred and ninety dollars, so it's just shy of two thousand dollars for the class. Books, testing, all that stuff.
Okay.
You have to do a background check and that's all part of those fees.
Sure. Yeah.
Well, I'll make motion to approve.
Okay, I would second that. Um, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimous. Uh, Carter, do you want to call Doug for the next items up here on the agenda?
Thank you, Doug.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, morning Doug, Carter, up in the boardroom, uh, we're, we're ready for you. Yep, thanks. Bye.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning, Doug.
We are up to the non-discrimination assurances item, Doug?
Yes, uh, Title Six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four states that no person in the United States shall, on the ground of race, color, or national origin, be excluded from participation in, in the United, the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. Uh, part six of the act deals specifically with nondiscrimination, or excuse me, non-discrimination in federal assistance programs and activities. The Federal Highway Administration implements the, uh, Title Six statutes. And the goal of the Federal Highway Administration, the Iowa Department of Transportation, and Iowa's local governments is to voluntarily comply with these Title Six requirements. Uh, the requirements include an agreement, a policy statement, and assurances. And they are, uh, Title Six assurances are to be updated within thirty days of a change in the head of an agency or every five years, whichever is less. So with the change, uh, of, of the chair of the board, Cassouth County needs to, uh, change their Title Six nondiscrimination agreement, Title Six nondiscrimination policy statement, and the associated Title Six nondiscrimination assurances. So I prepared a motion for the board and, uh, I think the board will pass that.
Is that all in one motion?
It is all in one motion, yes.
Thank you for that explanation. Um, is there any questions from the board, otherwise I would entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Um, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous.
Need to get some signatures. The first one is right there, Kyle.
Yep.
And then top line on that one. And then that right there.
Just the one on that?
Yes, very good, thank you.
Next up is reviewing options for Buffalo Urban Renewal Project. Whenever you're ready, Doug?
Uh, I guess I did not put this on the agenda. Um, I've kind of, I, I don't know if you have questions, I can certainly answer them. I don't know what you, what you would like.
As regards to Michael Somarsh.
Yeah. Yeah. Did you look into anything after our conversation last week as far as timeline of what needed to be done?
Well, we do have a, uh, we need to get the road right of way. Uh, title opinion is what we understand is being created.
Okay.
Uh, we have the plans ready to go. Uh, there is not enough money in the construction fund to build it. So, um, there's going to have to be, uh, some sort of a.
Do you have a, do you have a dollar amount on what would be needed for that? Or ballpark?
Is that because of that two hundred eighty thousand dollars that we're losing because?
No, this would have nothing to do with that. Right now, and if I'm wrong, Tammy, we have, I believe, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy-seven cents in the construction fund. Um, we will probably need a total of, uh, somewhere between nine hundred thousand and a million dollars to build that bridge.
And Doug and I did not have a chance last week, um, to get ahold of the attorney that's doing our, or that has, Aylers and Cooney, who has done our TIPS in the past, to talk about anything. So we have not had a chance to do any of that yet either, so.
Okay. Aylers and Cooney does our TIP work, do?
Nope, no, it's not Aylers and Cooney, what is it?
Bob Justin is the.
Yeah.
Attorney that is, but I'm not sure what.
Did, did he retire? Or is he still?
I'm not sure, I don't know, but he's always worked with us before, I guess.
Yeah, we, we're talking to a, a lady, and now I completely forgot the name of the firm, but no, it is a different.
Okay, I feel like he retired.
Yeah.
Roger, do you have any thoughts or anything for this?
There's not much money, we're not going to build it.
Anything further from the board on this topic? Any questions or anything?
It looks like we have the funding this year.
Yeah, um, do we know how much money will be coming into that urban renewal area? Over the next, next number of years?
That comes, that valuation time, not over the next, we only know year by year, so.
Okay.
We're projected to have over twenty-year period, one million four hundred fourteen thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollars is what Cassouth County is projected to have. We have loans right now equal to seven hundred fifty-seven, seven hundred fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
And some of that has been paid over the last few years with TIP funds.
Some of that is paid, and we are anticipating one point four million coming in.
That's what my, I, I've been trying to keep notes, but that was reviewing things, that's what my proj, that's what I looked at as being projection.
Okay.
Of the one point four, we have spent three hundred ninety thousand two hundred five dollars and twenty-three cents on the turn lanes.
Okay. So roughly a million to come in yet, based on your notes.
Correct.
Okay.
But that you're going to have to take out loan to get that.
Yep.
We did, the reason we've had seven hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars in revenue is because we've made internal loans.
Yep. I think it'd be good to do some further review and make sure we know where our numbers are at and get in touch with the attorney we're dealing with for that and, and then if there is possibility of making an internal loan work, I, I wouldn't be opposed to that.
Yeah.
If, if everything looks like it would work, I guess. Does that funding all have to come from the TIP or can it be a combination of, um, internal loan and budgeted dollars? Does it all have to be borrowed or?
No.
Okay. Just the funds from the TIP would be internal loan dollars or borrowed in some form?
Yes.
Okay, that's.
My understanding, I, I.
Uh, that was my understanding as well, so.
I don't think we're going to make any decisions on it today.
No, I don't.
Till we can get some more information.
Yep. Any further questions from the board, otherwise we can move on to construction in the right of way.
All right, construction in the road right of way. Um, we actually, there's only two items to take action on. Uh, the first is, I'll, excuse me, I think the first, yeah, Algonomenus, we utilities is planning on placing a, communication cable on one hundred Avenue from McGregor, B forty, south to two hundred Street and all of the residences there, uh, hooking them up with those, uh, communication cables. I, everything is going to be board there. I would recommend that the board would approve of this request.
I would entertain a motion to, um, approve the construction in the right of way for AMU. It is, um, permit number eleven forty twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous.
Okay, and then the second item is actually, we thought we were going to have all of the paperwork. This is a, a permission to Ray and Al Ludwig of Corwin to install a twelve-inch, uh, tile crossing through two hundred eightieth Street, um, between sections three of Westley and I think it's thirty-four of Buffalo.
Yep.
Uh, they're going to be draining to the north there. Um, but we are still waiting on some paperwork. If, uh, County Engineers Office would grant verbal permission, uh, to Al Ray, does any of the board have any concerns on that?
I don't.
Okay. Then the last one is a request, we've talked about this. Uh, David Beustrom was, uh, installing a tile underneath of two hundred thirtieth Street between section twenty-nine and thirty-two of Lots Creek Township. They have all of the, uh, paperwork in, I think they were actually, the board did, uh, did not have any, uh, concern on that. Uh, so we gave them verbal, and I believe they started on that one yesterday after it.
Okay.
So this would be kind of a formality, but we do have all the paperwork, I would recommend that the board would approve of this.
Okay, this is permit number ten thirty-eight twenty twenty-three, I would entertain.
Eleven thirty-eight.
What?
No, ten, permit number ten thirty-eight twenty twenty-three.
That's, I, that's not what I see in this, for David Beustrom. I see eleven thirty-eight twenty twenty-three in our packet.
No, it says ten thirty-eight on that.
Uh, the motion does read that. Uh, the motion does read that, and there is a typo, so eleven thirty-eight, it should be, the permit number is eleven thirty-eight twenty twenty-three.
Oh, at the top, okay, at the top it says eleven, yep.
Not ten thirty-eight. I apologize.
Yeah, okay, perfect. I would entertain a motion, Roger, okay? I have, I have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Is that all for construction?
Yes, that is all the construction in the road right of way.
Thank you, um, we're up to discussion.
Sign quick. Thank you. Bye, John.
Just one on that?
One signature and then that signature.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Cassius County Secondary Road Department, we are having a safety meeting on December one out at the Nature Center, and the board members are invited. Uh, construction, the bridge south of Taithaka is open, and people are traveling on it. Uh, open positions, I did get a person hired for Lakota Shop, Nathan Prothman is his name. So he'll be working out of Lakota, replacing uh Ron Engelbart, who retired. Uh, we do have a letting today for two bridge replacement projects uh that's being let at the Department of Transportation. Uh, one is, another one south of Taithaka on P sixty-four, and that'll be the last bridge on that. And then uh the bridge south of McGregor on Road Hoberton Road P third. Uh, I do have some no snow removal routes that I'd like to share with the board, if you could please review this information. These are all of our existing, no snow removal routes, and I'd like to have the board approve of these. I'd like to say thank you to my staff, for summer help, they started doing some inventory work, and Luke Snyder, our GIS. We're trying to get all of this onto our GIS map, and there are challenges that happen there, here is a map of these roads. But as we progress, uh the GIS system just helps me with maps a lot. So I'll put something on the agenda, just to approve of these, if the board does have any uh questions. One thing to, keep in mind is, all of these road sections, for example, are a mile long, we go from intersection to intersection. There are instances where there may be a house or a hog feeding uh unit on those roads, that we may plow and allow, we plow and let the people get out or the people get in, whichever way you wanna look at it. So, if there is a residence there, or, or if there is a, a building that needs to be uh taken care of, we do plow up to that, but we have defined it as a mile road. And some of these, to be honest with you, uh some of them were no snow removal roads first, and some of the CAFOs came in and built on the no snow removal roads. But we still work with them on that. Other than that, I do not have any uh other discussion points.
Okay.
We took that two hundred eighty thousand, have we done anything to correct that?
No.
So do we need to do a budget amendment, so we get that two hundred eighty thousand?
Well, somehow, there's got, local effort has to show that we have enough.
Right.
Um, whether there is revenue that is placed uh in the secondary road fund, or whether uh, a machine is purchased for the road department, that can go towards local effort. The bridge, if there would be expenses from another, which the Urban Renewal Fund, if there are expenses out of that, that goes towards local effort. So yes, something needs to be taken care of, or we'll have consequences of.
This, so I gotta add, so what do you guys wanna do, like just like lose that two hundred eighty thousand, or do you wanna take steps to recover that?
No, oh, I guess my opinion is, I think we should um make some changes for that, but, is it only property taxes, or if we could contribute local option sales tax to that as well? Am I correct?
Local option sales tax is, is, yes.
Okay.
A, a valid.
And it could go, it could go towards any expenditure in the secondary road department, or for the secondary road purpose, right?
Yes.
But you already have, you already have a local option sales tax.
Six hundred thousand is what is supposed to be transferred, so what are you saying, take more, more of the local?
Yeah, I mean.
That's that other, the other part of that local option sales tax is used for other, other expenses.
Like what?
Libraries.
Like what?
Libraries, some of the others.
Is that designated to libraries? No?
We do.
At the beginning of the year, when they, or budget time. The money that's due to libraries comes out of local option sales tax?
I'd have to look.
Okay.
I guess I'm not aware of that, um. Do we, do you have any idea where we're at for local option sales tax?
I have the top of my head yet.
I believe last year it was well over a million dollars, so I believe we would have some room on that, potentially.
But this is their specific language, on how that local option, what can you use?
Yeah, I, I guess if I remember correctly, I think Roger said it as well as others, that the purpose of that, local option sales tax was to reduce the property taxes for the secondary road purpose.
Those could be out there, it says for that, I would prefer it.
Maybe there's something we can do for the coming week?
Evaluate the ballot language, but I believe that was the primary purpose of it. So that was, that was one idea I had. Any other thoughts from the board? Wanna look into some stuff and, have it on the agenda in a week or two, or just have conversation?
If it's on there, you can't, I, I have one, I want to see the two hundred eighty thousand dollars that got to the calendar.
Do we have any sort of deadline to meet that, or?
June third.
End of fiscal year.
End of the fiscal year, okay, okay. I'd say let's put it on the agenda for two weeks. Good time to kinda look at it.
Just a discussion about local effort for the secondary road department? Or any specific language from anyone?
We could just put it down as discussion, but if we come up with anything, we can adjust it and set it for.
If we have a discussion and come up with any direction, then we could have it speci- uh the agenda item could be specific following that.
Yep.
Any other thoughts from the board? Okay. Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome.
Have to wait till nine o'clock for our public hearing, so. We got about twenty minute break.
Okay. Thanks, Doug.
Saw you down at the ballgame.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was good games.
That was exciting ballgame.
I know.
Yeah, no. Yeah, it's good, good for coaching staff.
I'm sure.
I know they've been close before.
Well, the last time I was down there was, I was a senior in high school, down there watching that.
Yeah.
Have a good one, Doug.
Yeah, we'll be back up here tomorrow night.
Almost true.
Yeah, not quite done.
I guess, I guess Doug's got a long day too, cause he's gonna be over at the public hearing this afternoon too.
You're probably, I mean, care connections at Northern Iowa, it could have been higher on the agenda, but that's all right.
Oh. Randomly thrown in there?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. We need to, to possibly push that uh.
Good morning.
Morning.
Oh. Wolfland down Eastern Iowa?
They're withdrawing.
To refile, and they're gonna, yeah. They're withdrawing their.
Oh, and refile, so I wonder if they're changing their route, and they gotta, that court a little bit more?
Yeah, they're working with, working with landowners, imagine that.
Imagine that. What a concert.
Yeah, I was wondering if maybe you should get like a picture frame for that instead of.
We'll get it out. There.
So like.
Probably just free.
Do you remember Doug say what time of the safety?
I did not hear a time.
I think it's usually eight.
Oh, minor foot injury, just kept putting it off.
Senior, are you down looking for beer this morning?
Yeah.
Forgot to wipe the seatbelt, that's why I'm saying. Okay. Morning Bill.
You guys doing alright?
You're trying to?
Yeah.
Bobcat?
Coon, he's got two hundred.
Honors.
The beer.
Little one, I always share. There, uh, but, uh, burnable.
We got trouble with this one.
Changing.
I don't know. No, then I'll forget it. Had this one all year.
Same old control, believe I'm too loyal right come next March.
Yeah. Burnable, he got into the seventies again, he wasn't doing too well. Did pretty much. On the last year, went to like forty out there. Four fifty. And then he wasn't having a good life for the week, so mostly probably very balanced style. Went down there. Looks he cut all them, he's like, he says, I can't have most places to sit all the time.
Oh, Nick, how we doing?
Good. This is from Tom, right?
Yeah.
That's what I recommend services will get us in trouble. Sir, you had them put on for three years, four years.
Morning Dick. Morning.
Morning Dick. What did you hear? I have no cartilage in that joint up here. Basically saw it going down. Injected some prosthesis. It's like cells. It's all that dark night, it was interesting when he started. Which are still cells.
Yes. Morning everybody. Hey, yeah. Yeah, yeah. How's school going?
It's so good.
Good. Could we, uh, everybody put a sign about attendance? Where are you at school at?
I'm at Iowa.
You're. Pre-physical.
Yeah.
Yeah, Amanda, your occupation there.
Oh, she's.
She's studying kinesiology. She just got accepted to jury. I'm sure.
Yeah.
If you weren't here, you wouldn't talk to me on all.
Yeah. I know the school's.
I don't know. Yeah. I was kinda wondering if anybody were, uh, well, give her any money. What'd you do before?
All I just surgery on them.
Oh, okay. That through the fall, the, uh, set updates, time to go.
Now you're gonna do it every year?
Yeah.
Hello Dick.
Put a camera up there. Be clear.
Say hi Shaq, can you borrow?
Oh, well.
No, well, just very briefly, didn't get much chance there.
Yes, it does. Yeah, I know what you mean, but you know, laws don't mean much to these people. Yep. Yeah, I know.
Alright. This is a woman, they're looking at the shelf, you're in a book. They're too busy picking one up. You gotta walk up and dress for more. James is supposed to pick him up, someone. The boxer coming in.
So we don't start.
Yeah, very much.
Sure.
Okay, it is nine o'clock. In our packet, we have, um, documents for the next two public hearings. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the classification of one hundred and sixty-fifth avenue between two hundred and fiftieth and two hundred and sixtieth street as service level B. Would there be a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. We have motion on the floor, is there a second to that? Roger, thanks. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favors, or we need a roll call vote here, uh, roll call vote please.
Plath?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Wactor?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes. Motion carried unanimous, public hearing is open.
Um. Should we open a public hearing for the other as well? Since it's about five minutes, or are we just gonna?
No, we can't open it till nine oh five, but we can just open and close that at the end. It'll be the same conversation basically. Any members of the public want to speak, or any questions, or Doug, do you wanna open us off?
Uh, I'll go ahead and make some statements. The board of supervisors set the public hearing on October twenty-four, twenty twenty-three. Notice was published in the Sway City Herald Bancorp Register on November eighth, twenty twenty-three. Notice was published in the Cassoot County Advance on November ninth, twenty twenty-three. Notice was mailed to all landowners on or around nine, November seventh, twenty twenty-three. Proper notice for this public hearing has been made. Uh, notices to reduce the level of maintenance on one hundred and sixty-five avenue between two fifty street and two sixty street. Options to the board include, but they are not limited to, do nothing. Uh, that would have the road remain as maintenance level A. Uh, make the complete road segment of maintenance level B. Make the road segment from north of twenty-five oh two one sixty-five avenue to two hundred and sixty street. Uh, make that a maintenance level B, or make the road segment from north of twenty-five oh two one sixty-five avenue and to south of twenty-five oh six one sixty-five avenue of maintenance level B.
Thank you. Um, anyone from the public having any questions, comments?
I guess I'll start out. Um, I like, I guess I'm speaking for eleven now, because all the people that home land there and the estate, it all came to me, so I'm speaking for eleven people. I, I'd rather leave it alone, absolutely do nothing on that piece of road. Because the county engineer's office has abandoned it for approximately twenty years. And they made it a minimum maintenance a few years ago. And the, the plow driver was told that once a year, well, he messed up the north half when he tried to cut sod in the fall, that then ended up laying all the gravel into the ditch, cause they couldn't, couldn't handle it, it just had piles of crap. Took three years since then to get some gravel on, so we don't mud bog up to the lane of my pond entrance. That farm ground below that hill is still agricultural ground. It can come out at any time. There's no way in hell that we could get a grain truck out of that lane and over the top of that hill in the condition that road is in now. And if it's a level B, people are gonna get hurt on that, with trying to farm that. If I hay that and try to get up that hill with racks of hay, I'm afraid I'd destroy them. And there is no way out of there except that road, because there's no way to come up over that huge hill out in that grassland. I'd rather leave the road at a level A and suffer what it is now. Because once we go to a level B, we'll never get it back. We've proved that with, they've, they've done nothing on that road for twenty years. We've just had to suck it up or else. And as soon as I came in and wanted a level C, it almost looks like a retaliation that, oh, by God, now we'll show you what we can do. I'd rather have it left at make level A, so that we can maybe someday say, hey, we need some maintenance on this piece of road, so it can be used.
Any other comments? If there's.
I think it's good the way it is.
A couple of weeks ago, that realtor came in here and told you that that would, moving that to a level B road substantially decreases the value of that crop, of that farm ground on bottom of that hill, that adds, this thing's gonna be settling. I don't, I don't expect you to make it a perfect road, but don't make it a level B road.
Okay, any, any further comments? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So.
Thank you, sir, I'll, I'll second that motion. Um, any discussion on the motion that has been made? Roll call.
Number on the resolution.
This isn't a resolution.
Not yet, not yet.
No.
Okay.
Um. Roll call vote please.
Plath?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Wactor?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes. Next up is the public hearing for service area level C road for the same section of road. Would I have a motion to enter, motion to open that public hearing?
Just wait.
Wait a second.
Oh, I knew.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, you did. Okay. Thanks.
I'll, I'll make that motion to open the public hearing.
Okay. We have motion on the floor, is there a second to?
I'll second.
Thank you. Um, any discussion on the motion at hand? Roll call vote please.
Plath?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Wactor?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes. Okay, um. This is the same low, same area of road we are talking, but with the class C instead of class B. Is there any discussion on this possibility?
Well, I'll make the mo, I'll mention that if you don't want anything to do with the road, make it at least a level C from north of my driveway to north of the old bridge. If you guys don't want anything to do with it anyway, relieve yourself from the liability that goes along with the, the road. You still have jurisdiction over it someday if you want it back. But put it in mind to where I can put it gated, gated and do with it as I see fit. As long as you guys don't want anything to do with it. Because that code doesn't say anything about adding if or maybes to the liability. It says no liability will follow you on class C road.
I, I would make this, um, the comment that this is not a discussion or a decision about adding a bridge, a private bridge on a county road, this is only classification of the road. Is there any other comments from the public?
I don't want any locks on it, because I do have a driveway of most sites in that crib.
Okay.
So I don't wanna lock up, just lock up, I gotta have access to the key.
I believe you would if that was the decision, all, all landowners and interested parties would have access, is that correct Doug?
Correct, the key would be issued to everybody that had interest in that.
Does that change your comments at all, or? Okay. Any other public comments for this hearing?
May I please make some comments? Uh, the board of supervisors set a public hearing. The board of supervisors set a public hearing on October thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. Notice was published in Sway City Herald Bancroft Register on November eighth, twenty twenty-three. Notice was published in Cassuth County Advance on November ninth, twenty twenty-three. Notice was mailed to landowners on or around November seventh, twenty twenty-three. Proper notice for the public hearing has been made. Notices to reduce the level of maintenance on one sixty-five Avenue between two fifty Street, two sixty Street to that of our ordinance maintenance, maintenance level C. Uh, options again to the board are, uh, they include but are not limited to doing nothing, which would have the road remain as a maintenance level A. Make the complete road segment of maintenance level C. Make the road segment from north of twenty-five oh two one sixty-five Avenue to two hundred and sixty Street uh, level C, and make the road segment from twenty-five oh two uh, one sixty-five Avenue to south of twenty-five oh six one sixty-five Avenue of maintenance level C.
Thank you, Doug. Is there any further public comments during this public hearing?
Bill, does this affect your at, at all of your farming operations?
Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to close the public hearing, is there a second? Roger, thanks. Any discussion on the motion at hand? Roll call vote please.
Plath.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes.
Whackter.
Yes.
Nah.
Yes.
Stacker.
Yes. Okay, that concludes our public hearings, next item up is to determine the area service level of maintenance for one hundred and sixty-fifth Avenue between two hundred and fiftieth Street and two hundred and sixtieth Street.
I would move to do nothing.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to do nothing for this, is there a second to that motion? I'll ask again, is there a second to the motion that has been made? Motion of it.
I'll second it for a second discussion.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion at hand?
I guess from having driven up there and gone down the road, is there anything, based on our, our maintenance ordinance, does it, if we leave it at a class A road, it doesn't make sense to to bring it up to that level of maintenance of a class A road. So then I guess, is that something we would, are required to do? Um, I mean by our, our ordinance to maintain it at a class A level, if it's remained a class A road. I, I just, are, are we gonna have to spend money to improve the road, is what I'm asking?
Yes.
Okay. And as a level B road, then will we also have to spend money to bring it up to a level B, or is it currently fine if it's a level B? Or C?
We would have to spend money on signs.
Sure.
Maintenance of signs.
Sure, but as far as the road itself?
I mean, there's minimal maintenance, and that's described in our level B ordinance.
Okay.
At this time, is it being considered, is it being maintained up to a level B road? There hasn't been a greater honor for ten years or better.
I, I'm just curious if, as far as, yeah, the cost of the different options, um, what we would have to either bring it up to a level of maintenance that it's supposed to be, or, or bring it down, so we don't have to spend that cost.
I guess that, that was the concern I had shared earlier, was the expense of maintaining it to a level A, since it hasn't been maintained to that in
a long time.
Twenty years or whatever, I, I don't know why we would justify that expense now. Greg, did you say if there was keys provided to you as well for access, you wouldn't have an issue with level C? Is that correct from your comments before?
Yeah, but I, I won't have access or get down to it too directly.
Okay, yep. I think it's important to have our roads maintained to the classification that they are, and I don't, I don't see that this area justifies as a service level A, so I I would be much more supportive of C or B, but C seems to make a little more sense to me.
Call for a vote.
Uh, roll call vote please.
Plath. To do nothing.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes.
Whackter.
No.
Nah.
No.
Stacker.
No. I would entertain a different motion on this topic, if there is one.
I make the motion to classify as a level C.
What section of the road are you, are you talking north of Richard Miller's place to the bridge?
Yes.
Okay. Was that one of your numbers specifically, Doug, in your?
There is a resolution, which are
Yep.
our, um, level C road maintenance ordinance, um, requires, uh, by resolution. So I have prepared a resolution, there are different descriptions, I don't know what the board what sections they would like, they'd have to be specifics there.
Would.
I just wanna make sure that everybody is understanding, um,
That was good.
Yep.
That the access for area service C shall be restricted by means of a gate or other barrier as determined by the county engineer. County shall only access, shall only allow access to the road to the owner, leasing, or persons in lawful possession of any adjoining land, or the agent or employee of the owner or leasing, or person, uh, in lawful possession to any peace officer, magistrate, or public employee whose duty it is to supervise the use or perform maintenance of the road. The grade shall be purchased and installed by the county, but it is maintained by the adjoining landowners. So once the gate is put up, it's no longer the county's, it is the landowners. They will be responsible for all maintenance, they will be responsible for closing, locking. If gates get damaged by people, it is the adjoining landowners' responsibility to put up new gates. So some, somebody's gonna have to, this guy had to be known and understood, once the county does this, it's no longer the county's responsibility. And that's part of the level C one.
Which number under your segment description would, would be, um, from his house to the bridge? Is that?
Number three. A portion of one hundred and sixty-five Avenue lying between two fifty Street and two sixty Street, beginning approximately one thousand six hundred feet north of the south quarter corner and on section line of section fifteen township ninety-six North Range twenty-eight West, the then principal remaining Plum Creek Township. Said point of beginning the north of the main entrance into twenty-five oh two one sixty-five Avenue, then it's continuing north approximately two thousand fifty on section line, two thousand, that should be, two thousand fifty feet on section line to a point south of the entrance to twenty-five oh six one sixty-five Avenue.
Was that your intent for the motion? Okay, so you would use number three. So this would be to approve by resolution number eleven, twenty-one, twenty-three, oh one, using the road segment description number three? That's, just to repeat your motion?
Correct.
Gosh, okay. We have a motion on the floor, is there a second to that? I will second that motion. Is there any discussion on the motion at hand?
I will go ahead and make a statement, um, the Cassuth County Board of Supervisors with a level C road remain, the jurisdiction of the roadway is still there. There has been mentioned, there's been conversation about a bridge being constructed on said roadway. This action by the board would not allow any private improvements to the road. Cassuth County still
Correct.
has jurisdiction, Cassuth County has responsibilities, Cassuth County
As I, as I stated earlier.
Yep.
Yep.
If land were to be sold, and new landowners would want that improved from a level C to a level A, we do have a policy, those landowners would all be responsible for improving that road, they would be responsible for the cost to improve that as well. Once it becomes a level C, it's a level C unless landowners want it to be improved to a level A.
Okay, is that the same for a level B going back to a level A?
Which could include grading, which could include road right of way. That is all determined by the county engineer.
So what I'm hearing is either option B or C, the road's gonna look the same, it's just whether you have gates or not, I mean, really?
Yes, and there are consequences to level C, whether they be intended or unintended.
Now we're back to why not wait till after the, if the state gets sold? Because now, wait a minute, if those people do not wanna buy the land and then have to improve a road to get to it, why should they be under the, after, why should they have to build a level C, A road? I'm just asking, that's, that's gonna be a huge expense if the way Mr. Miller, the engineer talks, to grade it upright and get gravel back on it again?
I guess I would say this probably shouldn't be contingent on a land transaction, it this is, this has been neglected for twenty years. Um, it should have been addressed back then, and it wasn't, and I, I think that
I think no action twenty years ago was action. But I'm just saying, why should a new landowner have to bring that code, that level road in order to use his new property up to a level A road?
I'll just make a statement that if somebody is gonna buy a piece of property, whether that road is a level A, whether that's a level B, or whether that's a level C, they're gonna know what is going on, and they're gonna, they're gonna purchase that property appropriately.
Exactly.
They're gonna take into consideration what it is, and they may come in and talk to the board supervisors beforehand and know what kinda costs there are, or they may not, again, it's a consequence.
So you just, you just lowered the value of that estate property?
You're the one who just spoke about wanting a level C road, I'm just telling the board.
Doug, I got, I got a question, so this item number.
Can I finish my statement?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
We have a person here that just talked to the board, and correct me if I'm wrong, but just wanted a level C road.
To where, from where, to where?
I think it was just what Supervisor Whackter put in a resolution. Now, I'm trying to make everyone aware of an action of the board. Now I am the bad guy. I'm just trying to advise you, okay? I'm advising the board of supervisors. Facts, fact of the matter, we have an improvement, it's policy for that. Now, if the board wants to choose to change that, that's fine, all taxpayers can pay for, uh, improving a level B, a level C, we can, we can do a lot of different things. However, I think it's fair, once an action is taken to reduce maintenance, to save taxpayers money, if it's going to be improved, there should be some sort of cost in there. I'm just trying to make the board aware of that, thank you.
Yeah, and that, that was what my question was going to revolve around, was the property or the location description of item number three. Um, does that go to the south side of the bridge, how, how far is that?
That goes to twenty-five oh six, there's a there is a building site to the north, uh, due. I'll go ahead and.
That's what I was gonna look at on the map here.
But when I've talked about in here more than one time, what I've asked for, for a level C was from north of my lane to just north of the bridge. Never included land north of that barricade, north of that bridge, not once.
So just, okay, so I, I just got the measurement on my phone, yeah, that, that would get all the way up to the driveway.
Do you have the map there, Doug?
So it would be about seven hundred and fifty feet, based on quick measurements here. For what he is requesting versus what was prepared in this resolution.
That's south.
This is, this is the, from his house to the river.
That's what was in the resolution right there?
No, the resolution has two thousand feet, which
Goes up the driveway.
Gets you up to there.
So this is two hundred and fifty Street, two hundred and sixty Street. The one hundred and sixty-five Avenue runs one mile north-south through the center of section sixteen Plum Creek Township. Twenty-five oh two is this building site right here. Twenty-five oh six is this building site right here. Option number three, the portion of one hundred and sixty-five Avenue lying between two fifty Street and two sixty Street, beginning approximately sixteen hundred feet north of the south quarter corner. That begins right on the north side of the driveway, the entrance into this. And it runs north to a point, uh, lying south of twenty-five oh six one sixty-five Avenue, and that is this right here, so. Making a, a gate right there, there's still then a road that would have to be taken care of between this entrance and the bridge, the old bridge location.
That really doesn't, uh, completely solve our issue of classification of the road then, so.
Yeah, if we were to just do the section north of his, right to the bridge, we'd still have that whole section, almost a half mile north of the, where the bridge is, that would still be less maintained, but the class A.
Yep. We do have we do have a motion on the floor for that number three description, would you like to amend your motion at all, or is that what your intent was to go up to that other, to go that full section?
I like my motion as is.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second to that motion?
You were the second, didn't it?
Yeah, you did.
Yes, you did.
Oh, okay. Um. Oh, yeah, yeah, mine, we've had a lot of discussion here.
So the least or cost to the taxpayers then for a level C road would be for signs and gates? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then for a class B road would just be for signs? And there would be no greater requirements for maintenance than is already being done?
There is minimal maintenance defined, yes.
Okay, and for a class A it would be a significant cost to taxpayers to bring that up to a class A maintained road, yeah.
If you put a gate by Dick's driveway, who pays for that, you said adjoining landowners?
The the county provides the gate, however, after that gate is installed, it is all the adjoining landowners.
Does that classify us?
No.
Uh Bill, your your property line is right there, so that gate would be north, so. The Elberts and the Millers, uh wherever this gate is, again, it would be those adjacent. You would probably, if you put it up here, you're gonna bring uh the Young estate or Shirley. Uh Young and her, whoever has interest in that piece of property as well as uh the Ed Miller estate.
I'm just saying, so it doesn't affect me, so I.
I don't believe it will. Cause you, I mean, you'd have access, it's the people that would not have access, they have to get through the gate in order to have access.
Guess it's up to you guys if you wanna maintain a gate and and Shirley Young estate is. But, yeah.
Any other thoughts or discussion? Otherwise, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Class?
No.
Jerks?
No.
Whacter?
Yes.
Nat?
No.
Stacker?
Yes, motion fails three to two. Um is there any other motions on this topic?
I'd make a motion to classify it as service level B. If I gotta find the right language here.
I I think it's the same, it's just the different letter, is it uh three that you're number three?
For the whole stretch from two hundred and sixtieth street down to um.
So between two fiftieth and two sixtieth?
The entire mile?
Well, down to. Twenty five oh two, is that the right address, twenty five oh two, hundred sixty?
You're going to to portion number three or portion number two in the resolution?
Down to Richard Miller's residence.
So you you would like from twenty five oh two to the intersection of two hundred sixty?
That is my desire, yep, yep.
That would be number two.
That seems to make the most sense maintenance wise and.
Okay.
Cost effective.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor for service area level B using item number two as a description. Um is there a second to that motion? Okay, thanks Roger. Is there any discussion on this motion?
I didn't, we go back to the top of the hill again. I do have a nine one one address up there on on that lane to that building site. At this time, they at least move snow to it. So I don't have to move it the whole distance. I'd rather have level B from the top of that hill to north of my lane, that way at least they maintain what they have. That is a level A that they've been taking care of for the twenty years.
So the county currently moves snow up to your.
To my nine one one address, yes, each of both of them, the south one and the north one.
Is is a service level B, is that an automatic, we don't move snow on that road? Or how does that work for snow ordinance?
It it's not priority, uh we have level Bs where we um people may have green facilities and. If if they need to move them, we we will only clear things out, but it would not be on a priority route.
Right now, there's a building, a hog site just north of that, two sixty. Makes perfectly good sense when they're moving the snow to come down, I use that building area weekly during the winter for ice fishing and recreation.
Would the county still be able, I mean, would you still be moving snow as you have done? In the past or would that service change then?
We would probably continue our practice as we have in the past.
Good.
However, I I would, I would feel more comfortable posting a level B at the south entrance of twenty five oh six.
Okay.
To be honest with you.
Okay, that would be a description three, correct?
That would be correct.
Would you like to amend your motion to that or keep it the same?
Uh I would, I would amend my motion to that and and uh. To.
To option number three description?
Option number three, if that's the recommendation from.
Roger, are you acceptable to that amendment? Okay. Um is there any other second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second on the floor, is there any further discussion?
May I ask there?
Yes.
So. We had a motion and a second to approve a resolution. And now we have another motion.
We have an amended motion.
And a second, amended motion?
Yep.
And the amended motion goes to option three, the road segment description?
Correct. Yep.
And what is the resolution number?
Eleven twenty one twenty three oh one. You, would you like me to repeat that or did you get it?
Was. The level C, what was the resolution for the level C road?
It was the same, it didn't pass.
So you're gonna use the same resolution number?
Yeah, cause it didn't pass, so there's not a resolution.
Any further discussion, questions, comments? Roll call vote please whenever you're ready, Jamie.
Class?
Yes.
Jerks?
No.
Whacter?
Yes.
Nat?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes, motion carries four to one.
I need to do some amending of what is taken care of there, it's probably. It's gonna take a little bit, but I.
We got time.
If you could proofread it, if we could work together.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay. Okay, yep. Melissa, would you like to come up for the twenty eighty?
Thank you all for coming in.
Yep, thank you everyone. How are you doing today?
Good, you?
All right, I think we are ready for you, if you wanna give us overview quick and we can open them.
Awesome, I can do that, that's too short. Um well, it's nice to see everyone again, I think I've maybe met everyone, I think I might be yet Joshua. Um I'm Melissa Lear, I'm the CEO of Care Connections of Northern Iowa, um which is Cassuth County Health and Disability Service Region. Um and I'm here today kind of on official business, um so um Carter joined our board this last year. Um since he's been on, it's been great having Carter as we've been on, um as he's been on, we've had a busy year. Um lots of changes legislatively, shocking, right, mental health and changes. Um so uh as you may or may not know, a couple of years ago, um House uh filed six nineteen passed. And when that changed, um that changed the appropriation on how MHDS regions were funded. So during FY twenty two, we had a hybrid of funding, which was state and county property taxes. Um FY twenty three, we went to total property taxes and same uh moving forward. Um so with that change, um because of taking out more of the, those county dollars, HHS and giving the appropriation. HHS changed some of the language in the law on how we needed to run our board and and do some of the things that we do. So um I have a twenty eighty, uh hopefully you guys all have that and have a uh change um sheet in front of you as well. Um I tried to narrate all the changes that I made, but. Um the big ones really have to do with um our governance structure change, so when they changed our funding and appropriation, they said. We need to have a more robust board that um has more individuals that um would have more, what's the word? Uh maybe some lived experience, different things like that on the board, so. With that, the regional structure of our board changed, um we added a person um as a voting member, as an adult, um relative utilizing services. Um so we have a a gal from um Osceola County, her daughter has an intellectual disability, she's been very active in services. Um our adult service provider is um Aaron Schmidt from Exceptional Opportunities right here in Algonna. So it's been wonderful having her join. Our child service provider is Amy Davis, um she's the statewide clinical manager for Lutheran Services in Iowa, and they also have a presence here in the county. Uh law enforcement, uh Chief Bo Miller is our um law enforcement liaison on our board, he's excellent. Um he is such a champion of mental health and we've just had a wonderful working relationship with him. Um judicial system, that is our gap right now, um we are looking to fill that, so if you guys have any names or anything. Um I have put in a request um to Judge Anne Gales, but uh she has um um not been able to take me up on that. I keep trying and I'm gonna keep trying, um but uh so I'm still looking for a rep on the board for that. Um another change of our um twenty eighty is that we don't have weighted voting anymore, so. Prior, we had our uh supervisors had um two votes and our um non-elected officials have one vote, they just said that's no longer allowed, so. We took off any weighted voting. Um we changed um in section four point three, some of our voting procedures. Um you know, just with the way the world works today, we uh said that our board could attend meetings electronically if possible. Um that's just worked out really, really well, um our territory for the region um can be really long, I guess, from Osceola all the way to Worth County. So um we do the territory, cause we have people strategically placed throughout, you guys aren't strategically placed. Um so it's nice to be able to do that if needed, um but of course in person's preferred. Um we added some um uh methods for dis dis, I'm sorry, dispute resolution, just saying that the region would be um responsible for any cost of that. Um section and then a few other things like member counties. We have member um or personnel contracts between our member counties, so that speaks to the language of how we have an employer relationship with the counties. Um because um we don't have counties paying in um with the property taxes, we removed any of the suspension of voting rights. That just doesn't make sense anymore, it's old outdated language. Same thing with um removing language that talked about the CPC in there, that's old outdated language, so remove that. Um and then removed it, removed seven point two, the process of initial funding, again outdated language. Um so u- ultimately, um that's kind of the multitude of changes that we've had in there. Um a little bit of history is our board, um the governance board looked at this and reviewed it. Um and they approved our twenty changes on September twenty sixth. Um I do have our governing board minutes, if you guys would like to see those as well. Um but ultimately, I'm I'm here to um take any questions, have you guys reviewed that and if it all looks well, um pass this as well. Um you and Clay County are what's left, um I've been planning to go to Clay County next week to visit with them. Yep, I think next week, um I'm trying to remember what Thanksgiving is and um and then we'll have it all ready to go and ready to be passed and then. The next time you'll see me, hopefully will be in a month or two, I just finished our annual report, so I could, I could talk to you a little bit on some preliminary things I found there as well, but.
Okay.
That's kind of what I have, so.
Sounds good, thank you for the update, is there any questions from the board? Any comments, Carter?
Melissa does a great job.
Sounds good, well, I would entertain a motion to approve the twenty eighty agreement changes.
So moved.
Okay, um I would second that, is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Do you?
No.
Think we do?
Okay.
Um. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
All right, that was easy, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We'll see you next Tuesday.
I'll see you, yeah, be there.
Thank you, Melissa.
Print and then sign.
Yeah.